On this meeting, regular city council meeting for the Toledo City Council for September seventeenth, twenty twenty five to order. Our first item is the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will take a roll call. Counselor Kaufman is running late. Counselor Sylvia is excused. He had surgery yesterday. Counselor Mix.
Yeah.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Titi.
Present.
Counsel President Bush is also excused, and I am here. We have four. We have a quorum. We may conduct business. Counselor Burns.
Thank you for being lovely.
You're not just... I didn't hear.
I need to add an item under decision items. It will be six E. You have the, you have the packet here in front of you. It is a letter of support for fundraising raising efforts by Homie House. You need to decide whether to change annotated, edited, okay, and however we want to do it. All right. First item, visitors' public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address counsel this evening on items not on the agenda? Is there anyone online, Krista?
I don't think so.
All right. We next have the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept or to... Yeah, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There's a second?
Second.
Been moved by Tracy, seconded by Andrew to approve the consent agenda as presented. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Keating?
Yes.
Counselor Mix?
Yes.
We vote yes. Motion carries four to zero.
So used to the rapid fire Tracy.
I know. I know. I know. I could tell.
It's throwing me off, actually, so.
Narrow margin time.
All right. There are no community service reports and our presentations to the council this evening. We have a discussion information item. Rich, can you update us on the Toledo Civic Center, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to make sure the microphone was on. I am expecting Mr. Scott from, from our architect firm. I inadvertently sent him the executive session link earlier today. I did just send him the correct link. So I am, I am expecting Mr. Scott. He will be providing a more detailed update for you when he is able to, when he's able to join. With that said, I'll give a general update, Mr. Mayor, and then if Mr. Scott has not joined by the conclusion of my report, if it would be okay to circle back when he does. Very good.
That would be fun.
So we had the, we had the open public meeting, community work, community open house on Monday evening at the Civic Center building. Very happy to report, we had a, what I think was a very good turnout. I had asked Brian in our Public Works team to set up three tables for the mayor, myself, the architect team, and then twenty chairs for the audience in addition to that setup. And we had, we were scrambling to find some, some extra chairs in the building. We had more folks show up than we had initial chair setup for. We had a very engaged conversation. The members of the, the members of the public had some wide-ranging ideas on what could fit either in that building or what could potentially fit in this building if City Hall were to join the police department in the new building. One of the things that we, that we notified the, you know, asked, shouldn't say notified, but asked the, the audience members to consider as they brought forward their questions is the police station, you know, ninety-nine point nine-five percent, if not more, will be moving into that building. So what we asked the, the public to consider as they brought their ideas forward is knowing that that is one of the uses that is planned for that building, think about uses that would be appropriate in conjunction with the, the police department. There was, there was significant support from the audience. If the funds could be identified and, and the funding mechanism be, makes sense for the city, that City Hall joined the police station at the Civic Center. There is, there was then quite a wide-ranging discussion about what would be the future of, of this current building, our current City Hall. There were a lot of good ideas. There was a lot of then discussion about how do we fund the, the upkeep of this building if some of those, if some of those potential uses were, were explored. I won't say that there was any, I won't say that there was any idea that, that council or staff or the architect had not already thought of. I don't think there was anything, and Mayor, you can correct me if, if you heard something that I'm forgetting, but I don't think there was anything that made us go, wow. We hadn't, we hadn't even, that hadn't even crossed our mind. But what was very encouraging was the audience engaged in the conversation. They had a lot of ideas that came forward, a lot of things for, for us as, as staff and elected, elected officials to consider. Mr. Mayor, feel, allow, allow me to pause for one moment. I just got an email from Mr. Scott. The link is asking him for the meeting ID, so I just want to provide that. Do it.
I just sent the link.
You did. Fantastic. We, we sent it to Judy as well. So let me go ahead and, and just keep an eye out for, for Mr. Scott as well.
So can I, can I add a little bit?
Please do.
The, the thing that was extremely good about Monday night is it was amicable. It was cordial.
Yes.
People were trying to collaborate and work together to figure out. People were being kind to each other. Denise was there, and, you know, it's, I'll be blunt, I was not exactly expecting that when I went up there because as you all probably have seen on our local social media outlets, that has not been the tenor surrounding every time somebody puts a picture of that building up. And I was very pleased and I was very honored to be there on Monday night because that group of people, about twenty-eight, came together to try and find solutions. And I was very, I, I came out of it feeling a whole lot better than I thought I was going to feel before I went in.
I would, I would absolutely echo everything that the mayor said. I, I did not go in necessarily with, with expectations other, other than that there may be some strong opinions, and there, and there were. But as the mayor said, it was a very cordial conversation. There was nobody that threw, through the, through rhetorical or metaphorical rotten tomatoes at us. It was a very pleasant. There were some folks with some very strong opinions, no doubt, but
But it was cordial.
It was a cordial, it was a cordial discussion. We should be seeing Mr. Scott and gentlemen from, from his team coming on board right now. So as they get themselves into the room and, and unmiked, I will invite Sid and Sandra Kohler from Scott Edwards Architecture to add their thoughts to the discussion.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We sure can, Sid.
Awesome. All right. And also, Sandra, I think, are you on as well?
I am. Thank you.
Excellent. So, good evening, Mayor and councilors. Appreciate the chance to come back and update you on what we learned from Monday. Was a, I think, a very productive day. We started out by meeting with the leadership team with the city. We toured City Hall. We met with all of the departments, got their feedback on their current and future needs, space needs, who interacts with the public, discussion of needed adjacencies, workflow of staff, needed support space, and then efficiencies. We talked about those sorts of topics with everyone. Some of the highlights from that discussion, they were expressing a desire to have a conference room that would be associated with the council chambers. Security was also discussed at the main entry, the sequence of spaces in the City Hall, staff at reception protected at the lobby area. Another comment was made about the council chambers, prefer not to have the council having their back to the entry, which I think was a good concept from a security standpoint. Interaction with the public, would like to get a conference room that's near the entry so that everybody could use that to meet with the public when they come in. And looking to improve on their break room area. It's currently basically attached to the conference room that's upstairs and the offices that are around it. So I think very good discussion, and we, as part of taking the tour, we're able to see how much space each department uses in the building. And so we have logged that in, and we're going to use that as a basis as we start to look at the, the other building. Should we call it the Toledo Civic Center? I, I don't know if we have named it.
Civic Center, Civic Center is the, is the, the current name that we're operating under, Sid, so that's a, that's a great use for you as well.
Okay. Very good. So that was our interaction with the leadership team. Any questions related to that?
No, carry on, please.
All right. Well, then we headed over to the police department and had a great tour with the sergeant. We toured the space, met with staff briefly, and what we're going to be doing is setting up a meeting with the chief when he is back next week. So we can talk through their needs and what they are looking for in the, the building as well. So that'll be occurring over the next week to two weeks. Then we went to the community meeting. And first off, I want to thank the Public Works team for getting the building ready with chairs and tables. Figured how to get the lights on. That was awesome. And then city staff for bringing ice cream treats. That might have been Krista that did that.
It was.
Okay. Good job, Kristen. The meeting, I thought, was very well attended. There was eighteen members of the public, and the mayor was there, and three city staff. And I thought it was a very interactive, I, I would just echo some of the comments I heard. When I joined, I thought it was actually really productive, good conversation, seemed positive. And so we had a, a good conversation. The mayor did an awesome job of facilitating the meeting. Rich chimed in. And we heard from the, the public about their thoughts about the building. And the concept of police being in the building was reinforced by the public. And also the concept of City Hall being there. They also brought up ideas of rentable space or a nonprofit hub, space for the community college classrooms, having an office there for the sheriff. Then we, and, and out of that discussion, really, the priorities came about police being the number one priority, then City Hall, and then adding the sheriff's office. And Mayor and Rich, please add anything that I missed here and your thoughts on it. Then we took a tour of the building, so that was really great for folks to get to see all floors of the building. I think it was surprising to several of folks that I talked to is how big it is inside, you know, perceiving, you know, with the basement and that second floor that's up there. So I thought a really good meeting out of that. There was then discussion about what would you do with the current City Hall building? And that, I thought, was a robust discussion around, could it be housing, Toledo History Center, Community College, some type of market, flexible space for multiple uses? So there was a fair amount of interest in, in what, if the City Hall did move, what that building would become. So is there anything, Mayor or Rich, that you want to add from the community meeting?
Well, the only thing I would add was how people really seem to solidify uses for the, for the basement. And how people who looked at it originally before they saw the space had ideas, but, and they were disparate ideas. And by the time y'all got done with your tour and they came back upstairs, they all just kind of fell in line and overlapped with one another. It was, it was interesting. And City Manager Heedner had one of the better comments, I thought, about you, the utilization of that space. Do you remember what you said?
The, we'd had some, we'd had some discussion amongst the staff, and the way, the way my mind works, just thinking about how everything would fit, I kind of started imagining, well, this, this function here, this function here. And so I was, when Brian took me over to do that, I was kind of starting to think about, like I said, where things could fit. And then I went down to the basement and I was like, oh. You know, kind of low seating, the current light, or low ceiling, excuse me, the current lighting isn't great. And so what I, I, I forget the exact wording is, is what I'm going to say, but I told the, the mayor and Mr. Scott that I really envisioned the basement as the area for things that aren't used as, as regularly and that don't necessarily see the, the public facing side. So for example, the evidence room for the police department, the conference room for City Hall, those things that aren't used throughout the eight to five workday and aren't something that the, the members of the public would necessarily be coming to a, a public meeting or meeting with staff, that kind of thing. So just paying attention and focus on what goes where based on usage by both staff and the public.
They did do a speakeasy down there with the police department upstairs. It was all in one.
He did have a member of the public that, as we were talking about, there wasn't specifically which building, but, you know, depending on here or there, the statement was, we need a brewery. And I believe my response to that was, I'm not going to disagree with you on that.
We were that, but it happened just six months ago.
A small scale one, but then that went away. And then, yeah, I don't know what happened. I think she fell in the whip horse. Gave up a little beer.
So Sid, did you have anything else for us?
Yes, a couple other items just wanted to cover, and that is next steps. So we're going to be putting together a space program with all the information we heard, coming up with sizes of spaces, those kinds of things. Then we're going to start plan options. So we're literally going to start floor plans for that building. Looking at every which way you can use it, how to get everything, you know, as much as we can in the building, all of those kinds of things. And then the next meetings that are set are October fourteenth with the leadership team. And then we also had planned an October fourteenth meeting with the community. I, I, here's a question for the city council. As it's, you know, the primary focus of this is the police and City Hall. Do you feel that we need to have a community meeting to review those options, or could we do it at a city council meeting? Just wondering, you know, from a, I guess, a messaging standpoint and where we're looking for input from folks.
Well, I think you could do one at a city council meeting, but I would want to have handouts of, of, you know, just one page handout for concepts. So that people in the audience and they have a chance to look at it online before the meeting so that when they come in, we're talking about apples and apples, not apples and oranges.
Great. Okay. Well, we can certainly do that. We can get a package together that would have the options. Because our plan is to come back to you on October fifteenth to discuss those.
Right.
So, you know, normally we would do another community meeting if there was going to be like community space and that sort of thing in the building. So I didn't know if it was necessary or appropriate to have a community meeting to talk about, you know, the layout for the police and, and City Hall.
But, you know, with ideas of how, how are we going to do that, you know, so that people can visualize it a little bit better? And that would help foster, like I said, apples-to-apples discussions instead of someone thinking, well, I thought you meant that this would be here and that would be over there. No, it would all be right in front of them and we can discuss the actual idea that you're putting forward.
Excellent.
Okay, go ahead, Tracy.
Would there be some safety concerns with telling the general public the exact layout of how we're going to set up the seven?
When we open that one up, we get public tours for the first month or so.
I would, I would also add that, you know, schematic designs of, of buildings would be a public record so anybody could, you know, ask for a, ask for a, a copy of it. So it, it's generally public information.
Yeah. The hardening point won't be on the, the general discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if there are sensitive areas, we can just leave that off the, like a label for what the space is, that kind of thing. And so that's something we can talk about, you know, any sensitivity to any particular spots in the building.
Right.
Cool. Okay.
That worked for. Anything else, Sid?
That is it. I really appreciate everybody's assistance on our Monday outing. That was very productive. We had a really nice meal at the pizza place up there. I forgot the name, the one on the highway when you're coming in.
Reeza Pizza.
Yes, yes. Yeah. That was.
Well, Sid, before you, before you sign off, you were very complimentary of the, of the, the staff and, and the mayor. And, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank your team as well, you know, the, the productivity of those, those meetings were very much, you know, your, your process and, and your team was very engaged with, with staff and the public. And I just wanted to, to thank you for your, your side of that as well.
Yes.
Much appreciated.
Your team was great, especially on the tour side of it. I thought they answered questions really well. And I think it shows by the way people came back and had a lot more firm grasp of, of the scope of the project. And that was, that was due to you guys, and I greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, good. I appreciate that. But I did think that was really effective, you know, it's talking first, then take a tour, and then when folks came back, they're like, oh, I get it. Or, you know, I see how this could work. So I thought that was very effective.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, well, thank you. We'll see you on the fifteenth.
All right. Very good.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Next item, decision items. First up, request for council action on League of Oregon Cities Delegate Resolution fifteen eighty-six. Krista? Is it rich? So you said.
Mr. Heedner.
Mr. Heedner, far away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, council, as you see in front of you with the, the request for council action, we are requesting council designate one delegate and one alternate delegate as voting representatives of the City of Toledo for the League of Oregon Cities Conference. The council is by the, by the organization's bylaws, the council needs to do that through the passage of a resolution that needs to be conveyed to the League of Oregon Cities, the LOC, either their executive director or their general counsel, no later than September thirtieth. So we are asking for action on that, on that resolution this evening. It is included in your, your packet. Discussion with the, with the mayor in advance of the meeting led to us going ahead and, and staff and including his name as the delegate and Councilmember Kaufman's as the, the alternate. That is, that can be changed by council before you take action if you have any reason to do so. The resolution as appears in your, in your packet was based on the template that was provided by LOC. So I'm confident that this will be accepted by them once conveyed by staff to the, to the organization. I'm available for any questions on, on that, if there are any, before, before your action.
Even here have a problem with who's chosen? So I have a question. So Counselor Kaufman doesn't attend.
She's going.
Oh, she is?
She is going this year. That's one of the reasons why, because it's the first time she's been able to go in years.
Okay, okay. All right. That was the only.
Yeah.
In a motion?
I'm, well, I was waiting to hear. Oh, okay. Sorry, Andrew. I usually have something, so I was waiting for something. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution fifteen eighty-six identifying Rod Cross as the, the primary delegate and Jackie Kaufman as our secondary delegate to represent the city at League of Oregon Cities two thousand twenty-five annual business meeting. I'll second that.
Been moved by Tracy, segmented by Jackie Burns to approve Resolution number fifteen eighty-six, which names myself as the primary delegate for the League of Oregon Cities Conference and Counselor Jackie Kaufman as the alternate. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Keating?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Mix?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Motion carries four to zero. Next item, request for council action, Library Advisory Board Resolution number fifteen eighty-seven, Library Advisory Board Bylaws. Harrison?
Come up to the thing.
Yes, Harrison.
Okay, do that. Yes, so, be, as most of you know, we've been looking to update our Library Advisory Board bylaws and any pertinent city documents that may need to be adjusted for that. That's a ball that our previous board chair, Eric Erickson, threw about a year ago, and then things got a bit busy with the city. So we finally kind of figured out some of the catch-twenty-twos in terms of what to do first, what needed to happen in order for other things to happen. And with the help from Savani Miller, we have finally, I think, could see how tonight goes, gotten that ball to land. We have Denise Marsh, our current board chair, and Melissa Roberts are from our board here as well. So that's what we got.
Well, first off, I want to say congratulations, Denise. That probably made a pretty easy transition for the board.
There's another board member around here.
Lissa.
Where would that be?
Right here.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I was waiting for.
Counselor Keating is on our.
Andrew, this, this is what you did when they finally pointed you out, you went.
Oh, it's got to be this today, Thor.
All right. Any questions for Harrison on these bylaws for the board?
You guys did a great job.
Yeah. I think you left pretty much zero stones unturned in this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution number fifteen eighty-seven adopting bylaws of the City Toledo's Citizens Library Advisory Board.
I will second that.
It's been moved by Jackie, segmented by Tracy to approve Resolution number fifteen eighty-seven, adopting bylaws for the City of Toledo Citizens Library Advisory Board. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Keating?
Yeah.
Such strong.
Counselor Mix?
I suppose.
Counselor Burns? Oh, thank God. Go forth and conquer. I vote yes. Motion carries four to zero.
Is there any doubt?
Now, stay put.
Yeah, yeah.
Next item is library bylaws.
How was it? Was it?
What's that as the second item?
There's, uh, there is a resolution.
There's uh, there is a resolution and then the bylaws.
These are hard to navigate. They're not in order.
They're, they're both pertaining to. Advisory Board though.
Okay.
Now.
I, I see what you're saying.
And the next one is this one.
Yes. So our next item, thank you Harrison.
Thank you.
That was probably the quickest and easiest thing you've had here for a while.
I don't know if I should tell him to not get used to it or not, though.
Okay, so. Are we going on to item C?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item C, uh, a request for council action on building space rental agreement between PacWest and Ambulance. And our item is the building agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so as the mayor introduced the item in front of you, uh, council is a, uh. Draft rental agreement between the City of Toledo and Pacific West. Uh, ambulance for a lease of, uh, of space at the Toledo Fire Department. Uh, this agreement was reviewed by, um, both PacWest, uh, ambulance as well as, uh, your city attorney. Uh, and your fire chief, as you can probably imagine, um, it is, uh, been signed off on by all of those parties. And is, uh, presented for your consideration. A couple of the highlights, uh, the, uh, space, uh, rental increase. Uh, will, the, the rent will increase for the space from six hundred dollars a month to seven hundred dollars a month. That may not sound like a big increase, but as Chief, uh, Lapoff described it to me, it was a three percent. Um, it was, it was three percent applied over a, over a series of, of years and came to, uh, came to that, uh, that outcome. It will see a revenue, uh, generated for the city of eighty-four hundred dollars, uh, annually. And, uh, details the, um, details the, the terms of the agreement, including, um. That, um, the, the correction of the, the address to, uh, the new location. It covers the, uh, the payment, uh, the terms which will go, uh, until next, uh, next June, the end of your, your fiscal year. Uh, as well as indemnification obligations by the tenant, kind of your, your pretty standard, uh, space lease. Uh, so this, uh, as I mentioned, this agreement has been reviewed by all the parties and is presented to you for your consideration.
Any questions, counsel?
So is this expired or is it for a term of?
Yes, it, it is, it is for a term of, of one year. Um, it will retroactively. Uh, it will, it will be retroactive to July first of this year. It will expire next year on June thirtieth, the end of your, your fiscal year. Um, the anticipation by all parties is that it will be, uh, continued going forward, but it, it is the term for your fiscal year this year.
So we'll visit this every year you got to.
Yeah, that is, that is the current, that is the current plan. Um, and, uh, likely not to change substantially after. This one, uh, unless something new comes up, but yes, this will be something that will come to you annually.
Well, I want, I want to thank everyone involved, especially for bringing it up to date financially. Greatly appreciate that. Also, I'm glad to see that we still have a great working relationship with PacWest Ambulance.
That's great.
Yep.
And that is, uh, that has been, um, communicated to me by Chief, Chief Lapoff as, as well. They, it's a, it's a relationship that is enjoyed by the fire department.
Yeah. Right. There are no other questions. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-five City of Toledo rental agreement with PacWest Ambulance.
Second.
Been moved by Tracy and segmented by Andrew to approve the twenty twenty-five City of Toledo rental agreement with Pacific West Ambulance. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Keating?
Yes.
Counselor Mix?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Is the next item, are we on?
We are on.
All right. Item D, RCA, Request for Council Action Memorandum of Agreement with the City of Toledo. And the Toledo Volunteer Firefighters Association. Rich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, similar to the last item, uh, counsel, this, uh, this item has been approved, uh, excuse me, has been reviewed. Uh, by Chief Lapoff as well as, uh, city attorney Miller and is presented to you for, um, for your, uh, consideration. As you're likely aware, in, in, uh, past years, the city has made a financial contribution each year to. The, uh, Volunteer Firefighters Association. Those funds go to, um, help the, the association with official. Expenses related to their, uh, firefighting activities, including uniforms and, and other items that are directly related to their service. Uh, is, as the RCA mentions, uh, conversations with, with my predecessor as well as. Uh, Judy Richter and Cindy Ullman from our, our finance department, and I concur with this as well. It was determined that a, a formal agreement was, uh, was, uh, appropriate for this action. So, uh, that is the agreement that is, uh, before you, the seating, uh, I think it's pretty straightforward. It's a, a standard two-page agreement. Um, what it does do is allow the city, uh, some flexibility each year in, uh, determining the amount. That is, uh, contributed during the budget process. So it does not commit you to an annual dollar amount. Uh, one of the things that was included in your budget this year was consideration in the, um, the. Less, uh, the decrease in the size of volunteer force, the amount of contribution was not needed the same in past years. By tying the contribution to your budgeting process, it enables the city to, uh, designate a, an amount. That is appropriate for the size of the force and the expenses that are, uh, anticipated incurred for that year. Without having to go back and do a, an amendment to the, to the agreement annually. Uh, so it, yeah, the agreement formalizes the process, which will include quarterly payments from the city to the association. Uh, but gives you the flexibility as the policymaking body to set that amount annually through your, your budgeting process. Uh, as I mentioned, the agreement has been reviewed by, uh, the city attorney, by the fire chief and myself. And is presented to you this evening for your consideration.
What's the geographical area that it covers? Is it East County or?
So currently, the, currently, the, uh, the City of Toledo's Fire Department, um, is the City of Toledo. And the Seles, uh, Fire District, which, uh, we contract with, uh, you know, for, for Chief Lapoff's.
I meant the association. What's their coverage?
I understand. I was, I was getting to that. So the coverage area is the city and, and the, uh, and the Seles Fire District. Uh, that we, we partner with. With that said, the volunteer fire force, uh, to your point, council member. It, uh, it covers larger than that, than that geographic area. I don't have the exact, uh, the exact range. Uh, that I've taken, answered your question. I don't have that this evening. I'll be happy to provide it, um, at a, your next meeting, just as, as background. Um, I don't know that it, uh, and I'll leave it up to you whether that impacts your vote this evening, but I'm happy to bring that forward.
You know, it's not asking many, please.
Correct.
I wasn't even going there. I just, I didn't know it was a statewide association.
Oh, thank you, thank you for clarifying the, the question. Yes, the, the volunteer, it's the Toledo Valley Volunteer Firefighter Association. So it is, it is within. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Uh, I think might have been, it might have been the previous agreement. I did, I did look at, at a lot of documentation. Um, it is the Toledo Volunteer Firefighters Association and is within Lincoln County at the, at the widest.
It's just, it's just those volunteers that are directed by our staff. So that would be Chief Lapoff and Deputy Chief Robinson.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the draft letter of support for fundraising efforts. Oh. Sorry.
It's all right.
Never mind. Okay.
That one too.
Yeah, that one too. Uh, to approve your twenty twenty-five memorandum of agreement between the City of Toledo. And the Toledo Volunteer Firefighters Association and authorization authorized the city manager and fire chief to execute the agreement.
Do your second.
I'll second that.
Right. Then moved by Jackie segmented by Andrew. To approve the twenty twenty-five memorandum of agreement between the City of Toledo and the Toledo Volunteer Firefighters Association. And authorize the city manager and fire chief to execute the agreement. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Mix?
Yes.
Counselor Keating?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
You bet.
And I vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Next item is. A memorandum that is put in front of you. This evening, uh, it is the letter of support you all requested that. I produce, this is what I wrote. Um, I need. Really, I just think you're, if we want to edit it, if we, how do we want to deal with this? Because once, once we say okay, then it goes on city letterhead and it can be given to the homey house that they can send out to all the funding agencies. They want to go after.
I like that. It's good.
Has this been reviewed? You've seen it?
I have, yes, ma'am.
Manager and does the attorney need to see it at all or are we okay?
I, I, the, the city attorney is, uh, obviously up to speed on the, on the donation. I had the chance to speak with her. She said she doesn't need, didn't need to. Yep.
I like your luck.
Well, I'm looking at the expert letter writer to see if the expert letter writer has anything.
That's my job. Should be get paid for.
Instead of having different animals in her hats, you need to tell which, which hat you're wearing today. Am I a city counselor? And Andrew, the letter writer? Oh. Okay.
All right. Swine's not wearing it.
Doug, did you see anything in there?
Let's go there.
I bet it's good.
I move to approve the draft letter of support for fundraising efforts by homey house as presented.
Yee-haw, second that.
It's been yee-hawed. Moved by Andrew segmented by Tracy to approve the draft letter of support for fundraising effort by homey house as presented. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Mix?
Yeah.
Counselor Keating?
Yeah.
Vote yes. Motion passes four zero. Next item. That's the end of our decision items. Our next item is, uh, I will take. City manager comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick items for council this evening. Your next, uh, regularly scheduled business meeting would, uh, normally be October first. Uh, however, that is the evening before the start of the, uh, League of Oregon Cities Conference. So, uh, recommendation, uh, and discussed this with the, the mayor this morning. Recommendation would be to cancel that meeting as the mayor, council member Kaufman at a minimum. And myself will be headed to, uh, Portland for, uh, for the conference. Um, I spoke with Arlene in the planning department today. The, um, planning commission has a, an annexation hearing that evening. Uh, she's expecting that meeting will take at least an hour to go through that process. They start at six thirty. So my recommendation, uh, if, if it works for council is to cancel the October first meeting. Schedule a special business meeting on October seventh. The, uh, yes, ma'am.
So Krista, you have got hotel rooms for all of us up there, correct?
Yeah.
When is the first night checking? Is it the first?
It would be the first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it starts at eight AM.
John, how is that going to work?
Other than, other than the mayor, it has the thirtieth for board.
Yeah, I have to be there. I start at nine AM the first.
Say that again.
His schedule is different than everybody else's.
Yeah, but.
He's a different.
That's all.
Yeah.
So does that mean that we're not? I'm trying to figure out when I need to go to my hotel and whether or not there is a hotel for me.
Well, tr- you're free to travel on the first at whatever time. I'm checking is probably three or four.
So yes, there is a hotel room for you.
Never mind.
Moving on. I'm sorry, do, uh, maybe I'm not understanding the question.
No, you're not. That's okay. I'll talk to you later.
So. I will try to, I, I will try to explain, okay? Um, check in is anytime after four on the first, okay, for those of us that have rooms. The events for, for everyone but myself do not start until Thursday morning. But they start early, okay? So it is probably expected that most of us will be on the road. Or in my case, I will already be in Portland that day because I have meetings all day long that day up there. Um, and so the question becomes, do you all want to have a meeting on the night of the first here? Knowing that you'll then have to leave this meeting here and drive the two and a half hours to get to downtown Portland. And then get checked in and all of that for an early day on Thursday. Or do you want to cancel the meeting on the first? Move it at some time to the seventh, which would be a week later.
And so my, uh, my recommendation would be to cancel the meeting on the first so that everybody can travel at their preferred time. Um, because of the, the planning commission, uh, anticipating at least an hour long meeting that would start at six thirty. Options for council would be to start at, um, five PM. Uh, that would make a hard stop. We would have to conclude the meeting by six fifteen so that we could change over and have planning commission start. Or we wait until after planning commission ends, which would mean your meeting wouldn't start until potentially seven forty-five, eight o'clock. So, um, I know staff, uh, would probably prefer five PM, um, but it's up to council, of course. It's your meeting schedule.
So I don't have my, my athletic schedule in my phone. I'm not sure if I have a game on the seventh or not.
Okay.
Um, but I will, I will go with whatever the majority of the council wants.
I'm sorry.
I thought we were talking about the first, the eighth.
So then we're, we're, yeah, my, my apologies. I'm.
Okay.
My, the cities.
You had said the seventh and so.
The cities that I've worked for in the past, the meetings were on Tuesdays and so I was doing math from Tuesday. Councilmember Mix is correct. October eighth.
Okay, I'm clear.
My bad. Thank you for catching me, councilman.
Fine, okay.
Yeah.
We still have the time constraints with, uh, uh.
Yes, the, the, that would be the second Tuesday of the, or excuse me, the second Wednesday of the month. Which would be the, the planning commission's regular meeting, which would begin at six thirty.
We have a business meeting scheduled on the second Tuesday, second Wednesday of the month?
No, your regular, your regular business meeting would be on the first, which is the night everyone's going to Portland. So my recommendation would normally be cancel that and move to the following week, which is the eighth. And the evening of the planning commission meeting.
Now, okay, clarification and I'll get this all put together fine. When does the planning commission have the hearing?
The, the planning commission's meeting starts at six thirty PM and that annexation hearing will be during, on the eighth.
Okay.
Yes.
Yee-haw. Okay, got it. Got it, got it, got it. Okay. Cancel the first, moving on.
Cancel the first and then the, the question then on the eighth would be, do you want to start at five PM? Knowing that you have a, a hard stop at six fifteen, or would you rather go after the planning commission? Uh, which could be as late as eight PM.
I was, I was going to say, we're talking about a special meeting here, so it's, I'm also wondering. Are we anticipating that there's going to be something so urgent that we have to have that meeting as opposed to just canceling the one on the first?
At this time, um, I don't believe that we are anticipating something that would be so necessary as to, as to have the special meeting. I wanted to give council the, the option, um, so.
I'm just thinking about the idea that as that date comes closer. We identify if there is something that's urgent for us to have a special meeting for. And I mean, in the entire, like, five day, like five of the seven days before this meeting. We're all going to be in the same place, hanging out at the same parties, doing a lot of those same things. So Rich could easily, I imagine, send something out via email to notify us that there is something urgent and will at least all.
I vote for that.
Yeah. So, like, we don't, we don't have to put anything on the calendar. We can base it on if there's something urgent.
So let me, let me make sure.
Be noticed if we're going to have a meeting.
Correct. Yeah, forty-eight hours ahead of time, which would be the.
Eight hours ahead.
Yeah, um, so, uh, it sounds like council member, and I, I want to make sure I, I was understanding your thought correctly. Um, that we only hold the meeting if something urgent comes up. Um, so as you said, I can, I can make that notification to council if something does come up. Otherwise, we would cancel the first in its entirety, meet again on October fifteenth. If in the unlikely event that something comes up urgent enough to call the special meeting, my anticipation would be to do it at five PM.
Sound good?
That works.
I guess you have a meetings on my deadline date.
I won't be buying another.
Perfect. All right, um, and then the other item I wanted to share with council this evening. Uh, I had a meeting, uh, this morning with Chief Lapoff and, uh, the city attorney. Uh, I was given an update on the, uh, process toward a new, uh, agreement with Inc., East Lincoln Fire. I almost caught my. I almost caught myself calling them uh by the uh what the acronym spells, and I want to respect the agency and, and go with the letters, so. Um, the city attorney is uh engaged in uh dialogue with her counterpart with East Lincoln Fire. Um, there are a few points that she wants to get clarified with. Um, with their legal counsel, uh but there has been ongoing discussion on that, uh, on that potential agreement, so. Uh, I will give a, a more substantive update to council in an executive session when we, when we have one. But I did just want to convey to you this evening that there, there is ongoing discussion between our legal representation and theirs. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes uh my uh items for the evening, thank you.
Can I ask you a question, please? Um. Are you, are you recruiting a city recorder and? Sending out? Two girls to fill the roles for her temporary?
We have uh, the city recorder uh interview process had identified two finalists at the time that I. Uh, I came on board. I had an opportunity to uh have a, a formal interview with both of those uh finalists. We uh invited uh both of them to come in um and have a um. I would say an informal uh discussion, just kind of here's, you know, you obviously have the job description. Here's kind of a, you know, a, a day to day of what the position looks like. Uh, we met with one of them last week, the other one is coming in on Thursday. And after that, uh, after that meeting, I anticipate uh having a, a conditional offer made to one of those candidates. So we do have, uh, that process is ongoing. Uh, I also have received an update from Jensen Strategies. Last week on the recruitment for uh the finance director. We have tentatively scheduled, uh, they're, they're initiating their process similar that they did during my recruitment. Uh, they're having their subject matter experts review the applications, they'll do semi-finalist interviews. And we have a, uh, tentatively identified October sixteenth. For uh finalist interviews for that recruitment as well.
That's exciting.
Yes, it is. I know Judy is uh, I know Judy is very excited uh to have uh, have that position uh filled, and. I know I speak for all of you and my team when I say how grateful we are that she has come and, and helped us out.
Oh, yes. And then what about the HR? Is that a temporary?
Uh, Shauna is currently uh under contract with the, with the city. Um, we are, um, it has been recommended to me by my uh predecessor. As well as several others that we uh work on formalizing um a permanent HR department, and so I do. Uh, I do hope to have um in the near future, a, a presentation to council on a plan for um. Having a permanent presence in that department.
Well, good work, man.
Thank you, much appreciated. Um, but Mr. Mayor, I am available if other counselors have any questions.
Any other questions? Alright, I'll move on to council comments. Counsel Kaufman?
Sorry, I'm late, I bought a new truck.
Congratulations.
For Max.
Yes, I have stuff. Sorry. What are you starting for? Those boots.
I was thinking they were uh, uh, uh. One, one word followed by kicker?
Kicking boots, yeah, they are. Kristen, you want a copy too?
Yeah, you need one for the packet.
Okay. And so. Harrison's gonna appreciate this. Remember not so long ago, there was a presentation at the library about what we want to do with our future. And so I took notes. Because I had nothing better to do that day. And um. There were lots of good things, ideas. Do you want to copy these too?
Sure, I'll take one, definitely.
Here, here, here.
Grab it out.
You can give me another copy, Linda.
So what I did is I brought a. I brought a, um. I basically condensed all this information. You'll see my notes are in the backside of it. I gave you copies of my notes in case you wanted to be confronted. And um. And I summarized, now these were just things that were brought up there. There's some other issues we know we've got to work on aside from this. But I wanted to bring you the questions and some of the things that I thought, okay. Now we as council, since Harrison is so great to have this event come to us and get all of this community feedback. Now I feel like it's our time as council to start tackling these issues. So what I did is I made up a packet here that asks questions that I think we can each ask counselors. I don't know how we want to do this, if, if this is something formal that the staff wants to. Bring together and bring back at some work session or something. But I would like us to individually be thinking about. Some answers to these questions that I've got here, and do you have any other questions you think we should be asking that I didn't bring up? Especially for the other people that were there. Um. Because. That was a trove of information and that is a resource I really don't think we should waste.
Yep.
We had a lot of people come, come to us. And, and Harrison did an, him and his crew did an amazing job of getting that event done and uh. And bringing it all to us, so I am.
Tracy, uh, uh, maybe you know. I, I heard that there's a community resource meeting towards the end of this month.
Yep. Yeah, that's the, the third event in our uh. In our grant funded series. It'll be the, the resource fair, so we'll have. A bunch of community organizations volunteering opportunities represented.
Is it like this, just two point O, or?
It, it won't be a panel discussion, it'll be an actual resource fair, like if you've been to a job fair.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll have people set up with booths for various organizations.
Okay.
Um, so that people can see what resources are available to them in the community and ways that uh they can give back. And, and find places for.
What's the date on that, Harrison?
Uh, the date on that is, is on the program's calendar, because I know if I'm not looking at it, I'm gonna think.
Rich, can you get Rod a, a copy, or do you want me to get him a copy?
I'll give him a copy, no problem.
That is going to be the twenty seventh.
Uh, Saturday?
Yeah.
September twenty seven?
Yeah, let me, let me just double, I'm, I'm paranoid about my memory, so I'm gonna double.
What time?
Uh, ten to two. He just couldn't be sure I got that.
Ten to two, you said?
Yeah.
And that's at the library?
Yep, it'll be at the library.
So this is a Saturday?
Let me live.
Alan's birthday.
Let me live check myself. Just discuss, continue.
Everybody turn, stare at Harrison.
Ah. Outside.
That sounds right. I, I remember chatting with somebody about it. But it scares me when I remember something.
Anyway.
Yep, resource fair, September, Saturday's September twenty seventh, ten to two.
Beautiful, okay.
We'll also have a pickleball clinic going on from noon to two that same day, so you can get some exercise in.
Alright, okay, so Tracy, I'm sorry, I interrupted with your question. With my question, so.
I'm fine.
I didn't know if you want more.
If you think I was Tracy.
No.
Okay. And, and this was, this was Cindy's baby. She got us this grant, she put this together.
Yeah. So you can't, Harrison, you don't get to make fun of me on my notes, but.
Thank you for this, this is really, really good. I'm gonna pass this along to Cindy too.
Alright, good. Glad I, glad I did something right for you.
Smack that self.
I was gonna say, you say that, and she's going to.
Counsel Burns?
Okay, so you have two thousand, Brunt, yes, uh, one for each event. And so um, the most touching one, of course, is the street dance. I listed um the things that we need help with. So that, so that you know, like, I don't understand Mr. Hedner. So the road closes at three. Um, you know, I met with Chief Robison and he helped me with the site map and, and coached me on things that needed to be done. So who closes the road? I mean, I've never closed a road before, you know, I know it needs to be done, and who? Do I need to tell somebody, or do you?
So the uh, the police department generally um will uh assist. In that process, Public Works will deliver the, the road closure barricades and other, other equipment, yep.
Yeah.
And then the police department um has uh patrol staff. Uh, that is of course on twenty-four hours a day, including the weekends, so they generally are, are available to help with that process.
So then, um, do, who informs them about that?
I do.
Precedent. Have you ever had the cops come and put the road flare out, or anything?
I know Public Works is always on it, of course, for.
The curb be closed around. You just put them out and.
Well, they're gonna be delivered here the day before, I just.
That's what I mean, they deliver.
All unfold, and that's what I'm having trouble with.
And I apologize if I misspoke, I thought that, I thought that I had heard that that was something the police department had done before.
Yeah.
Maybe they do, let me, I will double check on that, I don't wanna. I don't want to commit anybody to anything, so I will double check that for you, council.
We want to avoid any overtime situations, so. Okay, then, then with regards to then. Um, I listed here, Public Works is gonna drop off the stage and the cones and the road closure stuff, and that's on you.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't have to worry about that.
Brian's, Brian's in the, in the loop on that. We will also need to uh put out signage. Uh, declaring that the parking lot is closed, uh, and we'll take care of that, yep.
Okay, and so then I have already alerted the transportation department about the bus route with the street closure, so that's handled.
Great.
Um. And then, let's see. Need people to, to help out, we need people that will stay. To the end, to help us tear things down and make sure that, I need someone to be on patrol, make sure the building is secure, because the bathrooms are gonna be accessible. So that's, those are the things that I don't know that we have. We're having a meeting tomorrow evening here at six. With some of the volunteers that I've recruited, yeah, at the homey house. And the uh, a couple of the volunteers that I've retreated. So we can iron out all of, but I, I don't know how much I can count on. Uh, council and. And uh, uh, I don't want to assume. So, so there's that part. Then uh, the other thing is with the pet parade. Uh, Chief Robinson said that I needed to contact the health department, oh shoot.
There is no chief Robinson.
Definitely chief Robinson.
Whatever. So. Anyway. Um. He said I needed to contact the health department. Because we're servant weeners.
Yep.
Was another application, I love them so much, so. Um, I submitted the application to get that approved, but we need to have like three. Like dishwashing things.
Broke your knees.
Well, I don't, I don't, not worried about the grill, I need someone to, so we need to have three little.
I have, I have my food handler's car. So.
So they have dishwashing, um. Bins?
No, no, that. They have those inside the.
Oh, okay.
The pavilion down there.
Okay. So. Everything else is just written here, and I'm hoping that you guys can let me know in your. Available time, what I can count on. Um, so that I have to.
Turn to me.
I got you. I got you, so, okay.
What day is the street dance again?
See eleven, Saturday.
The eleven, October eleven?
No, the, the.
It's the fourth.
The street dance is the fourth.
I also have coolers. What do you need?
Um, well, there's gonna be probably two hundred bottles of water.
Alright, I'll bring all three of them, coolies.
And, and then um. Have a ice cream in back of my truck.
Are you the size?
Anything else, Jackie, on this?
There was, but it got sucked into the abyss.
Tables for the street dance, can you use um city of Toledo tables?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's one thing she's got as a need there.
I don't know where they come from, but I just know we're gonna need them, and I'll confirm.
We only need four?
I'll confirm, I don't even know if I'm gonna need four.
Okay.
So I'll know tomorrow night.
Um, so when you know. Let Rich know, and then because we have, we have two. Trailers loaded with chairs and tables and whatever else we need, so.
Okay. So the, the, the layout is gonna be, it's all gonna be in the parking lot.
Right.
So there's two food vendors and Zeez, the snow cone guy. And then we have a DJ, oh, by the way. Um, this DJ that I found, he's a young kid, so he's. He talks good. And I like that he was young, so he's gonna provide music and um. Out of all the DJs that I tried to find. He was cheapest, he was three hundred fifty dollars. And so Harrison can DJ.
He likes all the music.
So.
And knows all the music, it sounds like.
Anyway, so I, I thought, well, yesterday I just found the payment to find the money. And I stopped in at the. The bank, the post office, or whatever.
Oregon Coast Bank.
Yes, that one. And, and I went in and told her what I was there for, and I said, of the three hundred fifty dollars, how much can you contribute? She said, all of it. So.
Nice.
Yeah. Thank you, Oregon Coast Bank.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, all of that is, is really coming together, so. Been promoting the heck out of it.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Good. Good job, Jackie.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
Yep. Interview. Alright. Uh, mayor's conference are pretty straightforward, we have League of Oregon Cities coming up. Uh. This is the hundredth year anniversary. Pretty big deal, um. For those of you uh that track these sort of things. Um. The state transportation bill. Did not get voted on. Today, because it got extended for another week and a half. Uh, due to a health situation, so we still won't know about that. Uh, if it passes. We'll get about a thirty percent bump in shared revenue. Our wise, which for cities is a good thing, no one, I don't think anyone will disagree with that. Um. But it does raise other issues. That. This is gonna handle for only one by any, so this is not some sort of a long-term fix. Uh. Neither, I mean, either up or down, no matter how you feel about it, there is no, there's no long-term fix in the mix at the moment. So, um. If you have ideas on it, feel free to reach out to Representative Gober or Senator Anderson. Um, because all sides can say, whether you're Republican, Democrat, staff, whoever. Um. The ODOT poll is something that they're all struggling with. Because transportation has drastically changed. And funding for that transportation. Let's just say that while we had a smorgasbord. This looks more like a, um. So, uh. I will just say, I went to a, um. Like a. What do you call it? A round table, whatever, back in the day. In the Philippines where there were fifty-seven dishes. That's kind of where we're headed, and if you look at all of our neighboring states and even most of the rest of the states in Union. There are no two states alike in how they're funding transportation. They're all different, they're all over, all over the map. Um. So the state of Idaho, who everyone seems to think is this tax-free haven. Um. If you buy a basic fifteen thousand dollar car, you're going to pay a three thousand dollar surcharge on your new car. For their Idaho Department of Transportation, and that number grows as the value of the car grows. We don't have that.
Is that just electric cars, or?
No, that's every car.
Cars too.
That's everything. Uh, that's what I mean, it is. The way states fund transportation now, there is no one-size-fits-all, not even close. Uh, and so. Uh, we're gonna be struggling this for a while, for a while, if you have ideas, please reach out to those gentlemen. Um, they have asked me to broadcast this because it's going to keep coming up. And. Quote Senator Anderson, no storm, no stone needs to be left unturned. Because there's gotta be a better way than just a gas station, and there's gotta be a better way than just a single server. So.
So the biennium, is it twenty-six, twenty-seven, or is it? It says it's for a biennium, which?
So state biennium, so it'd be twenty-five through twenty-seven.
Okay.
Through twenty-seven.
Okay.
It's, yeah. It's interesting, to say the least. League of Oregon Cities, uh, I have been selected to go to the National League of Cities Conference in Salt Lake City in November, so I will be gone in the middle of November for that. One of the things that I am specifically there to represent about is our homeless situation here on the coast. Because it is so much different than what people face in the rest of the city. For those of you that don't know, our homeless population, the vast majority are seniors, veterans and kids. When I say kids, I mean eighteen and under. We do not have that chunk that you always read about and hear about in the eighteen to thirty-five, eighteen to forty range, we don't have a big population of that, what we have are seniors, veterans and kids. Which, from, you know, from reports from around the nation, that is odd. But it also presents a whole lot of unique challenges that we're trying to address here. So working on that, uh, at least as of today, I am still on the continuous improvement active, act, uh, action committee for ODOT. But with new legislation, if the new legislation passed, then there won't be any elected officials allegedly on that commission. So we'll see how that all turns out. Um, so that will be something that I have enjoyed because I've learned more about the inner workings of ODOT and how that functions. And it's interesting being an outsider and asking what I consider are pretty straightforward questions and have them all look at me like, oh, nobody thought to ask that question. And it's simply because I'm used to doing transportation here at the city level where, let's just say that all our Ts are crossed and all our Is are always dotted and uh, let's just say at the next level, sometimes that's not always the case. But, city of Toledo's moving forward, I could tell that from that meeting on Monday. Um, things are doing well, y'all are doing a good job representing city of Toledo. Um, I have been very pleased to hear from my colleagues from places that you all interacted with and how well you do that. And I want to thank all of you for that, glad Rich is on board. It's, but it's good times, folks, getting there. Harrison, thank you for all your work again, greatly appreciate you. And um, Chris, no matter what, you can't be a stranger.
Relax.
Alright, with that, oh, future agenda items, forgot that's a new one or end list. So issue tracker, anybody got anything on this?
Do we want to bring up this thing that I brought in or do we want you on it for a while before adding it?
Let's talk about it the next, let's have it as a discussion item.
Okay.
On how to move forward. On this at our next meeting.
I did um I'll add on just that first item, the tech upgrade.
Yes.
Justin and I are meeting at three thirty next Wednesday, so I would ask that um just a few minutes be setting in our uh, work session, study session, that, that afternoon. I can at least give enough.
So a short thing on, so uh, tech update?
Yep, and I already connected with.
Okay, alright.
That before, but just so you guys know.
Alright.
And Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, um, the um, the couple of items that we had for the tentatively slated for the, the work session, in addition to uh, as you know, you'll be receiving the AAR presentation from Jensen Strategies that evening. There were a couple of things that were initially slated for that, uh, that meeting, an update from uh, the Historical Society and the Railroad for one and um a water availability uh, discussion, both of those are gonna be uh, pushed back. Uh, the water availability, uh, Brian and I met with uh, representatives from GP. Um, we, we do not have a substantive update to provide at this time, it was a productive meeting, but more, more to follow. Um, and the Historical Society and Railroad, Chris has been in, in contact with uh, both agencies. They're just not gonna be ready at that meeting, so um, there should be plenty of time for an update from Councilmember Keating on, on tech. Uh, because the only other item we're anticipating at this time is the, the Jensen Strategies presentation here.
Alright. Anything else for the good of the order?
Um, just wanted to make sure you didn't forget that uh.
No, no, I, I know, I'll go to this and then we'll reopen the other.
You got it.
And then I will go home.
Perfect.
Alright, with that, our official meeting is adjourned.
Can we have two minutes in between?
And then we'll take a four-minute recess and come back into executive session. Pull out a sheet, we will re, and we will reconvene executive session under ORS one nine two point six six zero, parenthetical two, the governing body of a public body may hold an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. And at that time, when we re-adjourn, representatives of the news media and designated individuals may be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are prohibited. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations except the state's general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session, so we are on a four-minute recess, go.
We're technically still on the previous recess. The reason I was talking was, just because there was no.
Tell me about it. I understand, completes.
See it, Harrison.
It's a nice truck.
Nice truck?
It's used. Rich, this is my husband.
Theory, I don't, but I will just say hi and walk out. Oh, you got one of those?
Nice for uh, going in. I appreciate that, it's uh, it's.
Pretty sturdy.
I just uh, I just started week three, so it's still, it's still hurting, yeah, so it's not good. I don't know why. Identified as Andrew Peating by Zoom.
Anyway, so I'm really sorry that.
There's only one meeting I've ever been on.
We survived.
I will, I will do my best to make.
To.
I thought, you know, they gave us the question, I did not give them any of those.
The ones that we have now.
You know, one of this, we're trying to do is vitalize our mainstream. And this kind of is, right, the as a major center, you can stick over there. That's, I thought, it's a recent, I'm grabbing it, stealing it. Told her I was doing it, she's, oh, they're gonna get it.
I knew that, so even once I saw.
No, thank you for putting that out because.
Not only does it make perfect sense, I think it does.
Um, is, is the packet here?
I almost think that what we, that the, the part that I think we need to have.
Summary, it's not on all of them.
This, to move forward.
So.
So do you want to have that or do you want, you know what? I will keep.
Cause you know you need it.
You and Rod.
Yeah, I'm the primary. If I should die. No, that's because I put you up for it because so many times you haven't been able to make it. You can use vacation. You know, they let you take that.
Which one?
You couldn't be. I haven't. You and all of that.
It was only for that last.
So I was right.
Cause I actually came down when we.
I said, I have this requirement. Also, you could email me and just say like, hey. And it is required.
I couldn't remember the exact date because there aren't like notes to the executive session. That's when it was, that's when it wasn't, but the point is, I don't care about the. I don't think. I'm like, I don't. That I was always on Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There are already.
We'll, we'll get it updated.
I believe that. And also, please, that city called because there is candy apple, um, if you like.
Oh, the candy apple one?
Have your key really quick.
As soon as Jackie gets here, tell you all that you are now in, yeah, well, you ended your meeting and I'm not here.
In no way was I upset about it or concerned about it. I first noticed it a couple of weeks ago.
Share off what I have on. I'm sorry.
I'm always phoning her a slacker. Right. But it's only been once. One interview. I do remember, I remember you came on at one time to give me a thumbs up. Because I stayed off camera for most of it until we were having more of like a discussion where I wanted you to like see my face. But I was just listening to you enough, Ken.
Ah, there she is, alright, so for, for all of you.
Mayor, really quick, before you go.
Yeah.
Do we do the, do we do the uh, selection of the chair in your absence in executive session or?
Yes, okay. Exactly, yeah. So, alright.
Yes.
Well, I gotta wait for her to hit the recorder.
Yes.
She's doing the important thing, she's, I know everybody's uh, blood sugar. Vital, so the city recorder, just make sure all councilors are high on sugar.
As long as, as long as it's sugar at the end of that sentence.
I was gonna say, how she specifies that.